Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're one short here, but we do have a quorum. Mr. Allen is not with us at this time. He may show up here. But it is June the 5th, 2018, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council regular meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Mike McCann to lead us in our invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance and the Texas pledge. All rise, please.
Please pray with me. Father, in Jesus' name, we give thanks for our country, for the state of Texas, for Hood County, and for the city of Granbury. We thank you for our leadership. We hold up in prayer before you the men and women who are in positions of authority. We pray and intercede for our mayor, our city council, our judges, our police force, for all who are in authority over us in any way. We pray that the Spirit of the Lord rests upon them. We believe that skillful and godly wisdom has entered their hearts and that knowledge is pleasant to them. Thank you that discretion watches over them, that understanding keeps them and delivers them from the way of evil and evil men. Father, we thank you for surrounding us with men and women who make their hearts and ears attentive to godly counsel and do that which is right in your sight. We believe you cause them to be leaders of integrity, who are obedient concerning us, so we can lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty. We pray that the upright shall dwell in our city council governance, that men and women who are blameless and complete in your sight shall remain in these positions of authority. Your word declares, "Blessed is the nation," and in our case, the city, whose God is the Lord. We receive your blessing, Father. You are our refuge and stronghold in time of trouble, so we speak safety in our city and that we prosper abundantly. We're more than conquerors through Christ Jesus. It's written in your word that the heart of the king is in the hand of the Lord and that you turn it whichever way you desire. We believe the heart of our city council is in your hand and that their decisions are divinely directed of the Lord. We give thanks unto you that the good news of the gospel is spread in our city. The word of the Lord prevails and grows mightily for Granbury and the leaders you have given to us. In Jesus' name. Jesus is Lord over Granbury, Texas. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge allegiance to this flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. At this time, it's my honor to read a proclamation. I'm going to step down to the podium there and read a proclamation concerning the longest day, Alzheimer's. Yeah, there you are. Okay. Ritz. You've got some representatives from the Bridge Club, I believe it is, right? Our official proclamation reads, "Whereas in the United States, someone develops Alzheimer's every 66 seconds, and more than 5 million Americans are living with this disease; and whereas there are 15.9 million families and friends who provide care to people with Alzheimer's and other dementias in the United States; and whereas in 2017, Alzheimer's cost the United States $259 billion, this number is expected to rise to over $1 trillion by 2050; and whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States; and whereas Alzheimer's disease is the only top 10 causes of death that cannot be prevented, cured, or even slowed significantly; and whereas the longest day of 2018 occurs on June the 21st, and on that day, the Alzheimer's Association conducts an annual fundraising campaign called appropriately 'The Longest Day.' Last year, the Bridge Club of 74 participants, they raised over $10,000 for Alzheimer's research. Now therefore, I, Ninh Uhl, the mayor of the city of Granbury, Texas, in conjunction with the Granbury Bridge Club and the Alzheimer's Association, do hereby proclaim that June 21st, 2018, as the longest day. And in Granbury, the city of Granbury, the Granbury Bridge Club welcomes all to participate in a concert and a dance benefit on that evening at the Harbor Lakes Golf Club, beginning at 7:30. And I will tell you, I have been to that event. It's a great event there, so it'll be conducted, and that's where they raise all that money. So, thank you very much. (APPLAUSE) Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Send money.
The city council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda and during the citizen participation period at the city council meeting, one time a month. Subject to these following rules. A person wishing to address the city council must first register with the city secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to which they are going to be presenting. Only one person may approach the microphone at any one time, and that one person at the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual city council members or the staff. And the speaker may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the city secretary, who will make the information available to the city council and the city manager if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for a future agenda item, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The council shall allot a maximum of 30 minutes for citizen participation during this designated council meeting. Tonight, we have some speakers. The first one being, and I'm going to go in reverse order here, Mr. J.C. Campbell. I know you just got sent down there, didn't you?
Thanks, Gary. Say it in my seat.
Anytime.
Mr. Mayor, city council, and city manager, it seems like that every time we have some kind of a function in Granbury, I want to say thanks to the city of Granbury, because you really participate and you support the things that happen in Granbury. And I want to say that the Parks Department and the people, the Police Department, everybody that was associated with this thing, it went just perfectly. We've had real good comments for it. So with that, I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Ms. Pennell, because I know she's going to use it, so.
You're up, Julie.
Thank you, J.C. I didn't know you were going to do this. I am Julia Pennell, 403 West Bridge. And in this day of time when we point fingers so quickly, tonight, my night is about thank yous. First of all, I want to thank Carla and Tony for the beautiful letter written in the city participation in our house dedication of our historic home last week. With the chamber, it was beautiful. Tonight, I want to thank Gary Couch, Visi Granbury, and Mary Lester. I went to them saying, "Hey, Memorial Lane is the one and only. Why can't it be a destination?" The next day, there was a meeting. Two days later, there was a video. Fox News, two times, great coverage. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Visi Granbury. And thank you to Teresa. I want to thank Bethany. Bethany reached out to Channel 11, and I hope you saw it. J.C. and I went. He did a great, great story in all three phases. Memorial Day, Memorial Lane, Felder Flags, and the Historic Square, all three with pictures. It was beautiful. Bethany, again, she made 600 copies in advance of the program for Memorial Day. We passed those out as invitations. Friends of Memorial Lane showed up 7:30 that morning. We were hoping to fill up our 200 chairs. We did. Then there was 100 more. There were more than 300 people. We were hoping for the remembrance walk, to have maybe 25 or 40. I purposely walked at the last, not because I was the slowest, but there were wheelchairs, walkers, strollers, babies in arms, babies on shoulders, from babies to mature ladies like myself, walked in respect, and it was wonderful. We met at the square. Hood County News was so helpful. My main thing tonight is, like J.C., where else but in Granbury can you have HGMA? Join forces with Felder Flags? Join forces with friends of Memorial Lane? And have such a day that I will tell you was unique. There was not another day like that. We had more people say, "I have never experienced a Memorial Day like that." So thank you to city, to everybody that was involved, because wait till next year.
Thank you, Julia. Yes, give her a clap. Our next speaker is Noel Mullins.
My name is Noel Mullins, and I'm a resident of Granbury for a short, one-year period. This is the first time that I've had the opportunity to meet and have comments made for this council, its mayor and its other elected officials. My primary concerns or comments tonight are in regard to the subdivision Highland Park Bay. I'm sure that the council members are all familiar with that, and most of the citizens are. For those that are not, Highland Park Bay faces Water's Edge. That's the main feeder road. It lies to the immediate cross of what was a greenbelt on the south toward, again, Water's Edge. I'm a resident of Catalina Bay. My main concern is, and I know that this plat is right now, it's still in its preliminary processes. I know that the final plat has not been yet, or I understand it hasn't been presented to the council and to the Planning and Zoning Committee for any approvals at this time. The only thing that's taken place in that subdivision is the ground disturbance, and that was mostly new feel to elevate the property above the flood plain that is laying idle right now. The main concern of myself and some of my neighbors will address the two-story home construction on the property line of Catalina Bay and the mentioned Highland Park Bay. I know that there's an agreement back early in the preliminaries on this, on the Water's Edge side, that the Water's Edge boundary adjacent to this would have no two-story homes on that boundary line. That is not discussed in this preliminary plat where Catalina Bay is concerned. Myself, I joined that property immediately on its south side, and myself and my neighbors are very concerned about two-story homes being built so close behind our property lines. That's something that, in that final plat, that I would hope that it would be addressed by the developer and the governing bodies. That is a big concern right now, and I know I'm running out of time, but I'd also like for there to be some kind of an artist's rendition that's going to show what this project is really going to look like. I'm out of time, and that's all I can say right now, but thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. That concludes our citizen's participation. We next go into the consent agenda. The items on our consent agenda are, number one, to consider approving the city council meeting minutes of May 15, 2018, regular meeting, and the other item is to consider approving engagement agreement with George Morgan &amp; Sneed for the annual audit services for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2018, 19, and 2020. Council, you've all had an opportunity to look these over, especially in this agreement there. It's just something that they have to roll out to the council so that you have the opportunity to look over this. Are there any questions or changes to the consent agenda items? If there are no concerns or changes at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So is.
I have a motion for Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second, but Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we will move into the deliberation agenda. The first item here, we were going to have a presentation by the Granbury Arts Alliance concerning the creation of a Granbury Cultural Arts Commission.
Let me talk.
I do believe that, because I heard some rumors, that they thought it was on the 19th.
Well, that's when the ordinance.
I know, I know, but I think they thought. They did announce it at the meeting?
I might just add that in going to their meetings, I asked them to make a presentation tonight.
Yep.
In preparation of an ordinance at a later date. And they agreed to do that, but apparently something's miscommunicated, so they did hold a meeting last week, and three of the council members attended that, but in a nutshell, for the public that's here waiting to hear something about this agenda item, I'd be happy.
Go ahead, Mr. Coffin. That would be great.
Get some Cliff Notes.
That'd be great.
They've been working for a couple of years now to gain state recognition as a cultural and arts district for our community. As you are aware, we have many different forms of art going on all the time, performing arts, arts that hang on the wall, statues on our landscaping, and all kinds of art, and they would like to promote that. In fact, developing eco, art ecotourism is a big part of a lot of communities, and we're looking to do that through this organization. And so we've been working with Granbury Arts Alliance at their request to try to help develop an ordinance. And I've included the draft of that ordinance that their attorney, that they paid for, drafted, and then I've reviewed it, and then we sent it to our legal team, and Jeremy has reviewed it. We made some changes. The ordinance is generic enough to apply to any organization that promotes the arts or culture, so that they can participate in it the same way, but we would be creating a Granbury Cultural Arts Commission, which has board members, and so we would need to be appointing folks to serve on that board, like we do for the Parks Board, or for the Planning and Zoning Board, or for the Historic Preservation Board, things like that. This is another commission that we have an opportunity to create to help our community promote the culture and art promotion in the city. They do have some strong presentation that they were planning on putting together for us tonight that shows the economic impact and the positive things that it would do, but I guess we've miscommunicated somehow between last Tuesday, when they met, and the Thursday before, when we all sat down and came up with a game plan. So I'm sure that they'll come back to our meeting on the 19th, because they solicited citizens to attend that meeting in support of this ordinance being proposed. I did recommend to them that we, you know, first introduce the council to the concept of what we're doing, and then bring the ordinance back at a later date, and that's where I came up with the June 19th meeting for them. So anyway, we have a disconnect, and I'm sure Ms. Inge and Ms. Cleveland will be able to bring us up to date at the next meeting if we need to do a presentation for them at that point.
With that said, I'm going to go ahead, and that way, if the council's had an opportunity to look at this, the ordinance here, so is there any questions at this time, or any concerns there that Chris might want to take back and have that ready for when they have the presentation? Okay. Well, we'll look forward to that presentation then, and we'll, hopefully, it'll be on the 19th then. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 1834. And I'm going to call upon Scott Sobek to give us a staff report on that, if you would please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is an annual renewal request for Michael's, which is located in the Luton Retail Plaza. You can see the subject site that's delineated in green. They operate within a suite in the retail suite plaza, located to the far east, in cap to the east. The site's roughly 5.6 acres. It was zoned in 2010 as a part of the Luton Ranch Development Proposal. The purpose of the SUP is twofold, to allow for, first, outdoor display under the front portico area, and then, secondly, to allow for a cargo container to be placed behind the main structure in the back of the building. The SUP approval history dates back as far as 2013, full-on cargo container. You can see generally the location highlighted on your aerial photography in the red circle. The last SUP expired in November 2017. In essence, the SUP is termed out. We made them aware of it roughly two months ago, two and a half months ago, and it took a while for them to submit the application and go through the planning and zoning review process to this point at final council dispensation. As a sidebar comment, the zoning ordinance only allows for one-year renewals for cargo containers. When the zoning ordinance was amended for these cargo containers, they didn't want these things to be long-term. They wanted investments in brick and mortar. They wanted the applicants to prove up the necessity for these cargo containers, which are very industrial-looking, on a need basis, and have the applicant prove that need up through P&amp;Z and city council. They didn't want these, in essence, to be permanent fixtures in the built environs of the city of Granbury. So this is the site plan submitted by the applicant. It, again, dates back to 2013. They've been rehabbing this over and over since 2013. You can see the ordinance requirements to the upper left. Cargo containers require an SUP under supplemental standard number 20. They can only be renewed on an annual basis for a period not to exceed 12 months. They need outdoor display in the front of the building, and SUP for the standard business hours, and those can extend to a longer term as determined by city council. On May 10, city staff mailed out nine public notices. Notices were published also in Hood County News as required by state law. As of the council meeting tonight, no letters have been received by city staff in favor or in opposition to the request. You can see the notification halo in the aerial to the right. Your planning and zoning commission deliberated on the matter, and with respect to the daily outdoor display, they were fine with it. They recommended approval of the daily outdoor display. The placement of the merchandise or equipment and goods will be located in a manner not to block or impede, block or impede pedestrian or emergency ingress or egress to the store or necessary equipment. As a side note, they failed to put any kind of term limitation on this. They've done historically in the past, because this has always been rolled in with cargo containers, so when they approved both, they rolled in the one-year term limitation with both. On the cargo container in and of itself, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial unanimously by a vote of six a's and zero nays for the placement of the cargo container in the back. I can tell you, their discussion hinged on the fact that since 2013, they've had five years to come up with a plan. They were very, they were very exact how they expressed their feelings. They thought five years was long enough for them to come up with a plan of attack, to find adequate space, and every year, they felt that, as they approved these things, and no plan has been presented by the applicant, that there's an sense of entitlement each time we go through this reiteration of renewal. So that's your report, Mayor, city council. I can tell you, P&amp;Z's followed suit with staff's recommendation. We recommended denial of these. We don't, we see these things kind of hanging around with any kind of planned approach to address these things over time, and so your planning and zoning commission recommends approval of the daily outdoor display. Your city staffer would recommend putting some kind of term limitation on that SUP for daily outdoor display, and your planning and zoning commission recommends unanimously denial of the cargo container as presented by the applicant. Do you have to entertain any questions?
Thank you, Scott. And this is a two SUPs, then? It's not one SUP with two parts of it?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll vote on either one?
It's an SUP, in essence. There's A and B, and A is the.
Yeah, that's the way it originally rolled out, but it looks like they treated them as separate SUPs.
Right. But they are separate SUPs in the sense that you can fracture one from the next. They're not tied together.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. We do have a person wants to speak in the public hearing on this item, Mr. Jason Lyman, I think it is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I don't know if I want to speak on this.
There you go.
I would like to say just thank you for your consideration for this SOP. It's been very critical for our business, the container especially, over the last five years, as well as the merchandise on the sidewalk. As far as, you know, a long-term solution, I'm sure there is one. We're not quite there yet, you know, as far as expanding into a larger building or whatnot. That's up to the accountants, you know, on whether, you know, that's a smart business decision. I wouldn't want to be, you know, another big-name company that leaves Granbury. So we're not quite there yet, I mean, at least to my knowledge. But all I can say is, as the operator of that store, that it is a critical part of our business, and I spend a lot of time in the container, four months out of the year with merchandise, about eight months out of the year without it. We put fixtures in there all the time, just kind of alleviate the back room, just to make it more organized, but four months out of the year, it's very critical, being Christmas time, just coming up. So any questions, anything I can do to help persuade?
Thank you, Jason. I'm going to go ahead, and if there's anybody else in the public that wants to speak on this item at this time? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, but stand by, I think the council might have some questions to direct to you, so.
Thank you.
Council? I'm going to turn it over to the council now. Do you have any questions for this gentleman, or any questions for Scott on this item? Mr. Mobley?
So, Jason, what is the plan? I mean, you've heard the concerns about the five years, and this SUP was set up for not a perpetual situation where we just go on infinitum. It's for a short term, and after year one, and you figure, hey, we're going to need it again, I can understand reapplying, but at that point, there ought to be some kind of plan in place to take care of this situation, because we can have, where we have 10 of those back there at some point, but do you not see a problem here on our end?
I do know from the beginning that was a tough, well, I guess it was frowned upon, it seems like, you know, to have one. I mean, it is kind of out of sight, you know, so it's not quite a detraction right now, but I don't recall there being a stiff five-year limit. I just knew that it wasn't, like I said, it was frowned upon to have one.
There's a one-year limit. That's why we come back.
Right.
So we can reconsider it. So it's not a five-year limit, but after five years, isn't it time to kind of come up with a permanent solution? I mean, is business better than you thought it was when you built the store? Is that why we're needing this?
Business was better, but like I said, it's up to the accountants, and at this point, there's nothing on the books to grow beyond that store, that footprint.
Okay. I mean, that's my only concern, is in year 10, do we revisit this and say, okay, now it's been 10 years, and what's the plan for year 11?
I can say at Michael's Stores, you know, we have 1,400 stores, and there's over 1,000 containers for the Christmas season, so it's not a Granbury issue per se, it's just a seasonal need.
And is that out there year-round, or is it just out there for the four months?
Mine is year-round. My store is a little bit smaller than most. My store is a little bit smaller than most. Like I said, I use it eight months out of the year just to kinda make the rest of my store less cluttered as far as fixtures go in the back room. But about four months out of the year, it's, it's pretty solid with merchandise.
But you can see where going forward, there's gonna be a real issue at some point without, without some kind of permanent solution to this. And I don't think permanent solution is, is a storage container in the back or another one. Because typically, that's what happens, is we have one, then we have two, and then we have 10.
And I hope one day I'll get a magic phone call that says, hey, you've earned a bigger store.
And we're hoping so too. With 1,400 stores, I mean, I'm proud that you guys have that many stores, but we're concerned about one.
That's right, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Jason, I will add that I think probably the only council person that was on, setting up here at the diocese when you opened the store, and you called it a, you called it a micro store, a little, you called it something. It was a smaller store than the normal Michael's store at that time. But you said it was what Granbury was fit for, and so that you went along with that. And I don't think you had the container out there the first year, but then after that, there was a reason, there was a concern that your, a need to have that. And we, or you immediately realized that the growth was there and that you were gonna move in next door, I think where the children's...
That was my dream.
Yeah, okay. But that took that over, and then that, so actually, people do know that there needs to be a bigger facility, obviously, because they were, there was talk about maybe even expanding to that building.
Our initial sales were a lot more than expected, and then we've had average growth since then.
Council, any more questions for Jason?
Mayor.
Councilman, Counsel.
Scott, will you bring up that aerial again, the location of the cargo container?
There's a field behind us into the side of us, there's no, there's not any, no businesses or residential.
So Jason, do you envision you being back, if we approve this tonight, do you envision being back here again, asking for the same thing?
I'll tell you what, if you approve it tonight, I'll go back to my corporate office and tell them we need a better plan. Right now, there's, they're not working on it per se. They're, I'm sure they're looking at the numbers, and if it were so, then they would open up a bigger store nearby. But I'll go to them and tell them we need a permanent plan. As it is, I also rent a storage unit in Acton during the one month of the year, since there's only one allowed.
Okay.
Do you work out of that storage bin, I mean, day-to-day?
I was there today.
Well, it's not something that you just are there, and then when you have to restock inventory, you, like overnight or something like... And I guess what I'm getting at is if that storage bin was somewhere else where you had to go and truck the stuff over to the store...
I'd do it in my personal vehicle.
Pardon?
I have to use my personal vehicle for that. If I lost this, then I would, we'd probably use a U-Haul.
Council, any more?
Mr. Mayor.
I mean, pause right there, Mr. Allen is here now. Matter of record there, Carla, go ahead.
I just, Jason, I just wanted to make sure that you understand that it's not just your container that we're concerned about. If we continue to do this, then we're gonna have to continue to do this for other people, and yours. I drove by there this morning, and just to see where that was located and make sure that it was not an eyesore, so to speak. And it's, yours is situated in a decent area. It's not, you know, it's not visible from 377. But if we continue to do this for you, we've got 200 other stores in town that are going to want to do exactly the same thing. So where do we stop doing that? You know, we don't, we want Granbury to look appropriate and business-like, and that's why we have restrictions for the businesses and storage. So I would say if this is approved tonight, I think you're right, you need to go back to corporate and say, this might not happen next year, we need to make a new plan, because we've gotta stop it somewhere. There are other folks that are probably gonna wanna come and say, well, you've done this for Michael's, we need to do it too, but they've got nowhere to hide it, so it's not visible from main, you know, the main road.
Understand.
So I just want you to understand, it's not that we're, you know, it's not just you. We just need to make sure that we're not setting a precedent here that we can't control later on.
Understand, thank you.
And what I said originally was when we went to the grand opening and all, that they said that that Michael's is smaller because that's what the demand is here in Granbury. Obviously, that demand has grown, and so we're probably ready for the bigger Michael's. You agree with that, I mean?
I would love to have one. It's above my pay grade.
I understand, I understand. Here's the man. Council, any more questions for Jason here? Mr. Allen?
I apologize, I do wanna ask one question. Is it gonna be stored out front of the building?
There's two different S U Ps. There's one S U P for display in the front of the building, that's outside display that comes in and out every night. And then this, the other one is for the storage container in the back of the building.
Yeah.
So you still have a question on?
No, sir, no, I thought that's what I read, and I wanna make sure we were talking about that.
The P and Z announced, they approved the outside displays, and they denied the container in the back of the building that they've been using for now five years. And you, and Mr. Allen's been on the council as long as I have, so he was there for the grand opening. He was there when they, they opened the doors there, and was no need for the container at that time because you had everything you needed for Granbury at that time. Now, there's a need for that container, and I, obviously, it sounds like you've got one in Acton too, and another container there.
For one month out of the year, about, in November, I go, I'll go get one.
During, during Christmas and stuff, we do this a lot, for Walmarts and other stores. And I have no problem with that, but I agree with what Council Writer said. That, you know, we started on this, and then we're sending another example, another example.
And I think Scott can share some history on that too, because some of those are grandfathered in where they used to be a whole, like he quoted, it looks like a shipping yard at one time, but now it's down to a minimum of what you allow at these certain ones like the Walmarts and stuff.
That's correct.
This is a continuous all year long that sits out there, and it's actually a part of the store.
That's correct.
Mayor.
Councilman, Counsel.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the cargo for one more year with the understanding that it's highly unlikely it'll be approved another year. And that you encourage sure the corporate to come up with an alternative means for...
I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Counsel is jumping down to the approval of the storage container, at this time, the S U P for the storage container. I had that motion, do I have a second?
I would love to second that.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. I got you, hang on. So we have a motion and a second. Council, any more discussion on that motion?
I just have one question.
Mr. Corgan?
What specifically are, you said you typically use it for the Christmas even, season? What specific are those four months?
Well, it's the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays.
Okay, so...
And even a quick transition after Christmas, so January, October through January.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
But let's make it clear, you, you're using it year-round though, right?
I use it year-round. It's critical, those four months. Year-round, I use it just to kinda alleviate my back room.
It's there all the time.
I could haul it off and bring it back, if that would help.
I think Scott wants to intervene with the, probably the suggestions from the staff that if we do, which sounds like we're wanting to, to approve this, that the staff would recommend that the length of the container shall be, shall not exceed 40 linear feet, and that the color of the container shall match the exterior of the building, and that the term of the placement of the container shall be for one year. I think we put that in the motion, but I'd like to see the other two also put in that motion, if we could. Mr. Counsel.
Is that the size of the container, 40 feet?
40 or 41, I think it's 40.
These are the previous conditions from the prior S U Ps that have been rolled over year after year.
Okay, is, is the color matching the building these days?
Yes, sir, it looks good.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and amend the motion to provide that the length of the container shall not exceed 41 feet, that the color matches the exterior of the building, and the term of the placement of the container shall be for one year, after which the allowance for placement shall become null and void.
The second's okay with that?
Second.
We do. So we'll add those to that motion and the second. Council, any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion, all in favor of the approval of the S U P for the container, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We now go into the S U P for the outdoor, outside merchandise. Council, any more questions or concerns adjacent on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the S U P for the outside merchandise. I have the motion by Councilman Ryder and a second by Councilman Corgan. Council, any more discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
And there, there's no term limitation on that?
On the display?
On the display. Historically, the city has, has rolled the term limits along with the cargo container annually and trade the two equally.
I would say just, Mr. Mayor.
What he's asking is if we do, do we wanna put a one-year on that one also?
You know...
So we wanna amend the motion, enter the motion to a one-year on the outside display, the second also?
Mayor, the only...
Any more discussion, Councilman Allen?
Thank you, sir. Only problem I have with that, I hate to call names, but there's a lot of stories up and down through there that, that displays year after year after year, from Walmarts to Lowe's to Home Depot. I'll call names, then ATV, all of them.
Keep on calling.
I hate to see, I hate to see you come back every year. No.
Amen.
I mean, honestly, I, I think we should give them a two-year on that one. And that gives them, I mean, they're not gonna change if they're in violation of the code. Our enforcement will stop it right there.
Let me touch base on that if I may. So each individual property owner's, property's a little different. If you can see under daily outdoor display, light commercial requires an S U P, heavy commercial does not. So a lot of the properties that you're talking about, Lowe's, Home Depot, they're all heavy commercial, and they have a buy-ride application for it, for outside display. So comparing one box facility retail against another prompts a little research to make sure we're doing apples-apples comparison.
Is H E B heavy industrial?
H E B is, is light commercial.
Yeah, so is Kroger's. And I'm saying, we give H E B...
Kroger's had, Kroger is not, Kroger's heavy commercial.
It is?
Yes.
But H E B, we give, the first year, I think we give them a year, and then it was two.
H E B may have had a site plan component tied to the display area on the site plan itself, under the airport area. So again, again, it prompts a little research in order to make a valid comparison.
Okay, so what you're saying is that he should have a drawing on this?
Well, he does, but again, I don't wanna get too far off the, the subject property that was posted. But in order for staff to make a valid comparison between all these retail stores or businesses that we're comparing it to, we need to make sure we're having a valid comparison. And there's nuances here that doesn't allow that to be direct sometimes. For example, Kroger, Lowe's are all heavy commercial, those are buy-ride, they don't go through an S U P process.
But H E B does.
H E B, again, they had a site plan component when they did their store way back when. This was shelf space. This, this particular business was not known, it was just empty shelf space.
Is it something that you can do to suggest him to get a longer term on this?
My suggestion to staff is to be conservative and do, roll the daily outdoor display in the cargo container in tandem on an annual basis. And if council is, is, wants to work with the developer on doing what they need to do to make sure that the cargo container and all other uses are appropriately managed the way the city wants them to be managed, then not giving them in perpetuity on daily outdoor display may be one variable to do that, if that makes sense.
Council, it does sound like they'll be back here next year anyway.
No, no, no.
And hopefully, they'll be back, and, and that's the only thing they'll have on the agenda is for the outdoor display because the container will be gone, or they'll have something worked out.
I don't think I would ask again next year.
Okay. So, so right now, we have that motion with a one-year, and we have a second. So I'd say we, you know, entertain that one and see what happens.
If they come up with a plan for cargo containers and say, we'll, we'll do something with the building, and the cargo container will be done away with in the next year or two, we can extend the daily outdoor display three or five years as a perk. That's, you can do that.
All right, that's where we're headed.
We're gonna call a question.
Call the question in a second. We didn't get a second, so we'll continue to speak if you need to any more. But, Allen, has any more conversation on that item? We have a motion and a second for the one-year. Any more discussion? No further discussion. All in favor of the outdoor display, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Good luck. Our next item is a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number 1835. And once again, I'm gonna call upon Scott Skopcek to give us a staff report on that one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular piece of property is Baron's Auto Sales. It's located just to the west of Liberty Road and a couple lots east of East Ridge Drive. The site is roughly 1.2 acres. It's zoned heavy commercial in 2001. It have, was, had an S U P approved for used auto sales in 2015 with a one-year term. It has since expired. We've notified them of that, and they have since put their application in for the next available rotation. The site attributes is it has roughly a 3,500 square foot building with carports. They did do some asphalt work on the site. The property owner has made some improvements or investments into the site, inclusive of masonry facade improvements to the main structure, which was not conforming at the time, and landscape improvements. If you can, if I can direct your attention to the bottom shot, you can see those masonry improvements on the columns and the face of the building to meet our 30% requirement on the front facade prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued by the building department. These are the supplemental standards, and again, our zoning ordinance matrix that depicts that an S U P is required in heavy commercial for used auto sales. On May 10th, 2018, city staff mailed out 10 public notices to all owners within 200 feet as required by state law. We also published in the Hood County News as required by state law. As of the meeting tonight, no letters have been received by city staff in favor or opposition to the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission noted that the applicant has been operating without reported incident and had recommended to city council extending the S U P for a three-year term from the date of council approval. That vote was six to oh, six a's, zero nays in favor. Do you have to entertain any questions?
Thank you, Scott. At this time, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Now I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions for Scott on this item, any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said S U P with a term of three years.
So move.
I have that motion by Councilman Corgan?
Second.
And a second for Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is item number six, which is a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number 1836. And once again, I'm gonna call upon Scott Skopcek to give us a staff report on that one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is yet another request for an S U P for used car sales. The location is 1803 East Highway 377. This is the old Arby's building, if you recall. It's roughly a half an acre. It's been zoned heavy commercial since 2001. Its zoning history is we, on that heavy commercial zone district since 2001. We've had a couple of S U Ps, one in 2016 for used car sales. So subsequently after that, we've had a S U P for a funeral parlor. We saw that not too long ago. And that has since dissolved. And now we got a new S U P application again for used car sales. This is a totally different applicant from the previous 2016 request. You can see the site is, in the pictures, roughly, we have a 2,500 square foot building.
You can see the site is, in the pictures, roughly, we have a 2,500 square foot building. The investments made by the property owner, we have a masonry waste code and remodel of the improvements. You can see the waste code around the main building, resurface of the parking area. And as a perk, they removed a grandfather non-conforming pull sign and put a, more of a masonry and wall signage on to remodel our requirements. Zoning ordinance requirements, the matrix in the upper left-hand corner shows an SUP is required in heavy commercial. Supplemental standards tabulated below. On May 10th, nine notices were mailed out to adjoining property owners as we also noticed in the Hood County News as required by state law. As of tonight, one letter has been received in favor, none in opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously by a vote of six a's and zero nays. Approval of the SUP request, again, this is a new request with a term limitation of one year. Mayor?
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP for the term of one year.
So moved.
I have a motion, Councilman Allen?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item number six is approved. Our next item, I'm going to combine item number seven and eight, and I'm going to call upon Scott to talk about the ordinance number 1837 and ordinance number 1838, if you would please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. The first request is a request to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan from retail office to low density residential. The subject property is noted in a teal block area that's located south of Peach and to the east of Morgan Street, just north of the 377 bridge crossing. You can see in the teal color that the property is located in a light commercial zone district. There's a shot of the structure on the subject property itself. It's a residential structure. It's been occupied as a single-family residence since, since our records show. So there's been no commercial application based on our records that dates back as far as we have records. So you can see it's roughly a 1,700 square foot house. It's built residential code. It's built in 1952. The future land use map contained within the comprehensive plan, you can see, and again, in the teal color here marks that property as retail office. Again, the thinking that they stripped corridor, that whole Morgan Street as office retail, thinking that retail or neighborhood service activity would sometime take over that property. So in order to process a zoning request, state law says that the zoning request has to be commensurate with the future land use map or the comprehensive plan adopted by the city. And because the comprehensive plan here marks this as retail or commercial, any, any residential use of that property would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I will tell you that, that, what's, what also is prompting this is that house has been vacant for a period of greater than six months. So the grandfather non-conforming use and the evidence of establishing that grandfather status has been since vacated and abandoned based on our zoning ordinance. And there's this kind of itemized list of evidence of abandonment of one to six months, utilities being turned off. So a lot of those checkmarks have been checked off in the abandonment process. So when the applicant came in and wanted to establish a residential occupancy, we had to let the applicant know that we had to go through this process in order to get the residential occupancy validated. So to circle back around to the comprehensive plan, there's two approaches to this. You can either amend the future land use plan contained within the ordinance to, to residential and direct the city manager to change the area on the future land use plan from retail office to low-density residential or deny the application as submitted. I can tell you this property is also roughly a half an acre, a little under a half an acre. So we're looking at a little over 20,000 square foot. What's being requested is to rezone the property from light commercial to single-family residential R12, which has a minimum square foot threshold of 12,000 square foot. So even the largest residential district well fits within the 20,000 square foot that this property contains. So this is the zoning request from LC to R12, zoned in 2001. No records available indicating any commercial use whatsoever. There's been a loss of legal non-conforming status. It's adjacent to single-family residential on the east side. Again, an aerial shot of the property. It's buy-ride application in R12. On May 10th, city staff mailed out 21 notices to all property owners within 200 feet. We also published in the Hood County News. Staff has received two letters in support of the request and zero in opposition. Your Planning and Zoning Commission report is regarding the comprehensive plan amendment. They recommend approval of amending the residential future, future land use map from low dens, from retail office to low-density residential and then recommend approving those rezoned requests as submitted by the applicant to, to R12. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing. We do have one speaker, Charles Christopher, that chooses to speak on this matter.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Charles Christopher. I've been a tenure resident of Granbury. I really don't have anything to add, I don't think, to what's there. I believe that house, even though it is not on historic designation, is certainly an historic site. We intend to restore both the gardens that used to be present there consistently as well as restore the house fully, both interior and exterior to be an example of what Granbury has been for many years. House was built in 1952 and it is still in pristine condition inside, although there's now carpet over beautiful wood floors. We will restore the wood floors and the interior as well as see that both the outside of the building itself and the grounds are restored to the garden-like conditions that existed for years, along with that beautiful magnolia tree, which needs some tender loving care on the base of it, cleaned up, and that is our intention.
Big old leaves on them things. Those are the big old leaves on them things.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that limb, one of the limbs coming off the trunk on the bottom is literally this big. It's incredible, though. It must be tapped in some water somewhere, I'm going to tell you, because there's not been enough on the ground.
It's a nice one. Thank you, Mr. Christopher. At this time, does anybody else in the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing. You might stand by, council may have some questions for you. Counsel, is there any question or concern for Scott or Mr. Christopher at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
I'd like to direct my question to our city manager. It seems like we see a lot of these come, come through here, and it seems like there should be an easier process in place to where we don't have to Michael manage this. I mean, in our conversations, it seems that other, other cities have a better handle on this than we do. And, and I fully predict this will, this will go through. There doesn't seem to be a whole lot of controversy. I think your, your heart and your head's in the right place. But I'm looking to save, in the future, save some folks some effort and some expense, not only in the realtor's side of it, but on the property owner's side of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Mobley. I agree with you that we do have a arduous challenge to what we call downzone, and I will direct staff to work on that and see what we can come back in the future with, streamline this process somewhat, where if someone's trying to move into a house that's built, that's been zoned differently than it was, we've got to be able to accommodate that in an easier process. I know that there's laws in place and we have regulations in place that we have to follow, and that's the procedures that we've gone through. So we will look into other amendments that may come forward to help with that if this pleases the council, so.
I think that'd be a good move. And, and it's primarily because we spend so much money on a comprehensive plan and then periodically we take a little eraser and use a different color there. And it seems like, it seems like we're running in mud a lot.
You know, I'll, I'll deal with staff on this, and, but bottom line is, is, you know, you need to, if we have the flexibility to create an ordinance that allows you to downzone without a negative impact, maybe we need to seriously look at that. And so there's some legal considerations there that we need to compare and then look at the unintended consequences of that and flesh that out through the P and Z and bring a recommendation back to you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more discussion, any more questions for?
I've got a question for Councilman Mobley.
Councilman Allen?
You said other cities do it different. What are you talking about?
Well, if you have some, I mean, the most restrictive, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, is heavy commercial. But if you have somebody that's going to do light commercial and/or anything below that, they can, if you want to, if you want to live in a heavy commercial area, just don't complain about the trucks and the forklifts. So you can always go down from that, but you can't, you can't put a heavy commercial in the middle of residential area. So you can't, you can go down, you just can't go up. And that's all I'm asking, is let's simplify the process so that, again, we're, we spend a whole lot of time, and that's part of our job, we spend a whole lot of time discussing these things, and a lot of them, it's a common sense issue.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Counsel, any more discussion? Questions, concerns? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, at this time, this is a two-part motion here. The first one being to, to amend the comprehensive plan, and you've seen the two options, to either amend or deny. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to amend the comprehensive plan as stated.
So we have a motion to amend the comprehensive plan and to direct the city manager and staff to change the areas of future land use. Correct?
Yes.
And I have a second by Councilman Couch. So we have a motion and a second. Counsel, any more discussion on the comprehensive plan? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next part of this is the, the rezoning of the said property. Counsel, do you have any discussion or any questions on the rezoning portion of this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said rezoning for this property.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item number eight is approved. Next, we're going to move into item number nine, which is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 13, I'm sorry, 1839. Scott, I'm going to call if you want some more to give us a staff report on that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular property is located on the northeast corner of Business Boulevard and Highway 377. It's 2608 Highway 377, roughly 0.4 acres. You can see the, see the zoning history and the SUP history that's tabulated on the left. It's been previously an SUP for contractor shop, golf cart sales, ATV sales, and most recently motorcycle sales was the last one. This is a renewal for that particular motorcycle sales business. This was the site plan that was submitted for the motorcycle sales activity way back in 2016, which was the most recent activity. You can see the parking space. It's roughly a 4,000 square foot building. The previous property owner had, or the current property owner invested into masonry facade improvements on the south and west portions of the side to meet the masonry requirements. Again, the zone, the property is currently zoned heavy commercial and you can see that an SUP is required for used motorcycle sales and display. And part of that SUP is to delineate where that display area is. On May 10th, city staff mailed out nine public notices to property owners, and we also published in the Hood County News as required by state law. As of tonight, one letter was received in favor and none have been received in opposition. And these are the prior conditions that have been rolled over previously with the exception of the term limit in 2016. Prior to it expiring, we issued a term limitation of one year. Your Planning and Zoning Commission is currently recommending by a vote of six a's and zero nays that the SUP be approved and be approved for a term of three years. Motorcycle shall be displayed as delineated on the attached site plan and the outside display will be allowed during standard business hours, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. And I want to emphasize that is sales and service, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion first of all, for the, as, as the staff has, has recommended here, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP with the expiration of three years and also that motorcycles will be displayed and, on the, on the site, and that the outside display will be allowed during standard business hours from 7:00 to 7:00. Which is concurrent in what they had before, other than the three years. We're going from one to three years. And we have that motion by Mr. Couch.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Scott. Our next item, item number 10, once again, is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance 1840 that review a crest of Circle Lake Properties. Scott, I'm going to call if you need to give a staff report on that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this is the property which currently sustains big lots. It's at 1820 Acton Highway, roughly 4.6 acres, zoned heavy commercial in 2004. There was an SUP for one cargo container in 2004 issued by the city, but that has since been long wiped off the books. But that's as far as our records go. We haven't seen a cargo container outside for quite a while. The purpose of the application is by the applicants to request approval for two cargo containers for a 12-month period. So this is a, this is a particular site where the cargo containers had appeared without any kind of notice to the city, and they were approached by code enforcement that they were inconsistent or their, the placement of those was incongruent with the zoning ordinance, and they gave them an opportunity to come into the planning department and make a request before they went further, any further with enforcement activity. The placement of the cargo containers, you can see, when they were dropped there, are noted in red. They were in parking spaces in front of the building along 377. So again, there's the shots of, of the containers. So I'll get to the P and Z report here in a minute. On, on May 10th, city staff mailed out 13 public notices to property owners within 200 feet. Notices were also published in the Hood County News. Staff received two letters in support of the request and none in opposition. The P and Z worked a little bit with the applicant in this particular light, saying, okay, you're unaware, this, I believe the manager is fairly new to the Granbury area, and they wanted to work with this particular applicant. They made it very apparent that they didn't want the cargo containers on the front presentation of the building along 377, nor in parking spaces. So the applicant was very willing to dialogue with Planning and Zoning Commission and move the cargo containers to the back of the building where they could be unseen. And so what was, what came out of that dialogue was the placement of the cargo containers as suggested by P and Z in the locations, this noted in the aerial, that's to the south of the building on the green space and outside the fire lane to the east of the building in a little notch. They also imposed the conditions that's delineated in your staff report. The lengths shall not exceed 40 feet. The color shall match the exterior of the building. The placement of the container shall be for one year, after which the allowance of the placement shall become null and void. And the one cargo container shall be located, and this is the one referring to the east, located in the loading dock on the east side, outside of the 24-foot fire lane. located in the loading dock on the east side, outside of the twenty-four-foot fire lane of the building. And the one shall be located on the south side within the existing grass area. Wanted to make sure that there was no placement of that within the delineated fire lane. So that's your, and this was approved by your planning and zoning commission by six days and zero days. So, Mayor, that's your report.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing to anybody in the public who wish to speak on this. I do notice we've got some representatives from Big Lot or else they're wearing the shirts of Big Lot. If you wish to speak, uh...
I don't have very much to add.
Go ahead, save it for the mic there, yeah.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I don't have very much to add. Um, I've been at this Big Lots exactly a year. Uh, the growth, it's almost eight percent last year, so they've overshipped us. And so those storage units, um, have furniture in them. We don't want them any more than a year. I've already talked with our district manager and corporate office and they're in conversation with the owners to see about adding on. So hopefully that will be done within the year. Other than that, I, I, there's nothing else I could do but ask for your favor to have this.
Well, you've answered my question. I was going to say, what, what are your plans? And it sounds like you've got a plan.
Yes, sir.
In place there and it's good that you got growth there that, uh, we may need a bigger bill.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, you got any questions or concerns for, uh, the Big Lots folks? Thank you. Does anybody else in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, have any more discussion or any, uh, concerns for Scott or those folks? If not, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said S U P with the conditions of the length of the container not to exceed over forty linear feet, the color of the container and mass of the building, the terms of replacement of the container be one year for which after allowance, the placement shall become null and void. And also number four, the cargo container shall be located in loading dock area on the east side of the building.
And one on the south.
And one on the south, I'm sorry. You can make this motion.
So moved.
I have a motion, but Counselman Mobley. I have a second, but Counselman Corrigan. Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, folks. Our next item is to consider, okay, our next item is to consider approving an engineering service agreement with Hibbs and Todd. And I'm going to call upon, well, I guess we're going to have Hibbs and Todd up here. I was going to let, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Chris Kaufman. He'll sort it out for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. As y'all are aware, we've been discussing our wastewater needs and, um, we've, I've also asked, uh, Mr. Kendall to, uh, spend a few slides in his presentation tonight talking about their qualifications. I think not only good for us as folks that have been working with them in the past, but the new council members that may be new to here and the citizens in our community may not realize, uh, the, the engineering firm that we have here in Granbury, that, that is our city engineer for construction of these type projects. And thought it'd be good to, uh, give them an opportunity to not only address our needs, but, uh, basically tell us why they're the best firm to, uh, allow them to help us meet those needs. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Keith Kendall, engineer for Hibbs and Todd.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, city council members, good evening. For the record, my name is Keith Kendall, chief operating officer of Apptec Hibbs and Todd, twenty-nine oh one Glen Rose Highway. Chris, is there a PowerPoint presentation that we can? This could be death by PowerPoint one more time. Thank you so much. Uh, as Chris stated, and I guess I wanted to know if the agenda on this little misleading, this is really just about Apptec Hibbs and Todd. This is about where the city goes forward in addressing an existing wastewater treatment plant that's outlived its useful life and a decision of where it goes from now. And also, more importantly, where does the city go in the future of addressing their infrastructure needs for wastewater and the growth that we project to see coming in addition to the flats that you've already approved within it? So this is much more than just about us. Now, having said that, as, as Mr. Kaufman said, he wanted me to allude a little bit about what E H T has done in the past and what we're about over the last three decades or so. This is the presentation items. I'm going to jump in a little bit of, of tooting our own horn, quite frankly. We usually don't try to do that, but I'm doing is at the request of Mr. Kaufman. Uh, we are kind of a, a odd mix of, and odd in a good way, in the sense that we have both cutting-edge technology in addition to over thirty years of conventional plants throughout the entire state of Texas. Emphasis on convention, on the cutting-edge part. We were the first to do a submerged membrane facility. We have a range of expertise from a hundred thousand gallons to a hundred and ten million gallons per day wastewater treatment plants. We still have the distinction of the largest surface water desal facility being designed by Apptec Hibbs and Todd. And the largest membrane bioreactor facility, which is the cutting-edge technology for wastewater that we've been seeing, is growing more popular in the United States. Certainly, the last few items there are related to just conventional treatment with the exception of, we also have and have been recognized as a firm with the most experience for radionuclide treatment, which is something that some cities have to deal with within the state of Texas. So I talked a little bit about, you know, most importantly for us, we did your two M G D wastewater treatment plant, uh, over twenty years ago. Combined with all the experience statewide, we have the experience here within the city with your existing wastewater treatment plant. We've received numerous state federal awards. And I'm going to talk a little bit about one of those projects. This is a major project that was done in response to the drought of two thousand and eleven. It's a seven M G D advanced treatment reclaimed water. Uh, there was basically eighty-five million dollars of construction done over thirteen months. Within it, it recognized or utilized all the cutting-edge technologies as you can think of. Biological nutrient removal, membrane bioreactor, reverse osmosis, and biologically activated filters. All of the above to put them in where nutrient regulations could change the next twenty or thirty years. City of Abilene is already sitting in a catbird seat to respond to those as they go forward. In addition to getting additional seven million gallons a day of reuse. I talked about the timing on that. You can see where the start of construction was December the second, two thousand and thirteen. We were putting out reuse water January the seventh, two thousand and fifteen. That's the thirteen months and eighty-five million dollars gone. But of course, spending money and getting construction done fast is one thing. Getting it done fast and well is another. This is what some of the awards that we've received. Engineering news record, just as well as a background, is kind of our standard for the construction engineering industry of our national magazine. We were recognized for the Texas, Louisiana for that project. In addition to, we received a national reuse award, which only one gets that, uh, for national requisitions. We're quite proud of that in regards to that project, you know, being such fast-track, large amount of money and then working so well that it's been recognized by numerous agencies for the expertise and the cutting-edge, uh, technology that was put in. Apologize, this is hard to read, but it, it's purposely that way. This is just about forty plants over about twenty different parameters, starting from when the wastewater comes into the plant all the way to the time it leaves, including the reuse. And you can see all the variety of experience associated with each of those plants for each of those elements within it. And this shows where we've stayed quite a bit, uh, through Texas, all the way down to South Texas, over to the coast, all the way out to the El Paso region, where there's not been a lot of wastewater. We have an experience somewhere in the state of Texas and treated it, and treated it successfully. So let's get to the more important part, and that is, where's the city at on wastewater system capacity? You have a current plant that is permitted for two million gallons a day and that is your final permit. It's two million gallons a day. Your current loading is right at seventy percent of one point four million gallons a day. Your capacity allocated to approved developments, just the flats that's been approved, has already taken up to two M G D. The significance of that is every flat you approve is coming from some future wastewater treatment plant because the existing capacity is gone within it. And that's, that's an important thing to keep in your mind of why we're moving forward on such a large scale with the wastewater plant that we're doing. This shows the, based on where we're at in twenty seventeen flows that I mentioned, the one point four million gallons a day and where we'll be in twenty thirty-seven. The caveat to that column to the right is, does it not account for T C E Q rules of when you've got to start planning and design and construction? Or does it account for the currently approved development? That's just growth of where you'll be at, at twenty thirty-seven. The seventy-five ninety rule, as I mentioned, that is when you have three consecutive months of seventy-five percent of your capacity, keeping in mind you're at seventy percent right now, you miss, you must start planning for plant improvements. At the ninety percent with three consecutive months, you must start construction. So that means there's a time between that seventy-five and ninety that you have not only do planning, but design permitting and be ready to go to construction by the time you hit that ninety percent. An example of that is, we talked about twenty thirty-seven at two point two M G D. Uh, at seventy-five percent to prevent that, you need to be at two point nine three or three M G D, uh, to prevent getting any issues with the T C E Q. That number that I just covered still doesn't cover what you've approved, uh, within it, within the flats. This covers everything as we go forward, two point two in twenty thirty-seven. But the flow projections that we bring in, what you've already approved, in addition to the growth that is expected and accounting for the seventy-five ninety rule, and that quite frankly says if you need three M G D, account for the seventy-five percent rule and build four M G D. Because you, what you don't want to do is shorten the life of the three M G D by starting to have the planning in to expand just because you're going to get to three M G D and, and hit seventy, and hit seventy-five percent of that shorter. So the overall plan as we go forward with the city is looking at four M G D. Part of the analysis, and this has been well over a year of analysis, is going through the city's existing wastewater treatment plant and their wastewater collection system. As I mentioned, I could, not going to read all of this, but you'll continue to see the word end of useful life, end of useful life. And that's to be expected. This last, this project was built in nineteen ninety-nine. The majority of these that were used is for wastewater, which is corrosive, and they're designed for a twenty-year life, uh, within it. You know, yes, the concrete structures, some of them are good, some of them are not. When we have the influent headworks where it gets a lot of offgassing of hydrogen sulfide, very deteriorating concrete as you go through more treatment, concrete lasts longer. But all the metal and a lot of the mechanical components, you can't expect them to last just more than twenty years. And we're at that now. And we've been seeing the city have to put some money into the plant just to keep it going and to stay with compliance. So I mentioned, we also looked through the collection analysis. Lift station seven is one. We either take the flows off of it to relieve it with a new wastewater treatment plant or we need to do some major rehab to lift station seven, our new force main, because it just does not have the capacity for the flows that are expected to come to it. Same thing for the main lift station in addition to lift station twenty-three in the future. Uh, and I want to note this analysis of what we're presenting, you'll see three elements of it and compliment the city staff on directing us and not only look just, I don't want to be at twenty years and doing this again. I want to have a long-term plan of looking out for the next forty to fifty years. And that's what we're going to describe tonight as we go forward with this and we think answers a lot of that. So here is that plan we talked about. Phase one of what you're considering tonight is construct a new east wastewater treatment plant for one million gallons a day. And to also upgrade the existing wastewater treatment plant so that it continue to maintain the two million gallons a day capacity. That's going to give you three million gallons of capacity for right now for this, for what we recall the short-term needs. Phase two, that's yet to be done, will be involve a new north wastewater treatment plant. We see that in the next five to ten years. That will also be collection improvements at the main lift station. And that's going to be really expanded by when you need to do that main lift station. It doesn't make sense to take it all the way down to the existing south plant. You'll save a lot of money, uh, from a collection system side and, and more strategically put a north plant for developing that area to serve the areas within it. So that's the phase two. And then, and the long-term needs for phase three would eventually be going out to the west. And the pattern that you're seeing here is we're no longer centralizing the treatment. Uh, that was one of the things we wanted to get away from because every time we cross the lake, if we have to upgrade the force main or if we had to add another force main and more pumps, it's a million plus, if not more. And to try to answer that is growth. Doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. It's, you know, instead of, it's not only crossing the lake every time, it's also, let me expand the lift station, let me just continue to pump, pump and pump. Well, pumping wastewater along ways is expensive. It's a high operation and maintenance cost from electrical standpoint and staff time as well for maintaining all of those facilities. So this is that long-term plan that I talked about that we've been working with the city closely and going forward. So what is that immediate need of the phase one that we're talking about? It's the wastewater treatment plant at the existing south plant and then the east plant brings us to a total of about thirty-three point eight million dollars for that first phase, including all the soft costs and contingency that goes with it. What is that going to do for the existing plant? It's going to be a new screening system that's desperately needed along with a new influent lift station. I'm not going to read all of these, but you can see the rehab and the upgrade. It basically is going to take it from the time the wastewater hits the plant from upgrades and rehab to the time that it leaves the plant, including the reused pump station that we've got. And just so you can see some of the items we're talking about, this is coming in from the screening improvements, the new influent lift station and going all the way through the plant to the rehab reused pump station, uh, within it and covering all the secondary treatments. And I want to note in that, when you see the schedule, you're going to go, why is there three years for this? Well, this is going to, the plant's going to be done in two phases. First phase is to address those immediate needs, which is the influent lift station and some of the other items that are in critical condition. They need to be addressed now. Our plan is then to go ahead and permit and build the new east wastewater treatment plant, taking that flow off the existing plant, which will then allow us to come back into the existing plant and do the rehab within it. So there's going to be two construction phases with the existing plant because it will, the rehab and the repurposing of a lot of those units will be a lot simpler once we take one million gallons a day of flow off of that existing plant and allow us to do that.
Could, could you back up one slide, please?
Sure. Yeah.
I would like to draw everybody's attention to the next to the last line. It seems to be high importance for that old plant and, uh, upgrade the odor abatement systems is very important. I wanted to make sure that we accentuate the fact that that's in the plan.
Yes.
To, to really address the odor even better than we already have, so.
What you're saying there is, the city manager, there's going to be no smell out of there.
What I'm saying is this is going to be better.
Well, anything's better. Forty-six million dollars is going to be fine.
We're certainly going to upgrade the odor abatement system, but I will continue to maintain this engineer. It's still wastewater coming in.
But I believe you told us how it's going to be gone.
Yeah, and, and that was, quite frankly, that was part of the alternative analysis. If you wanted to get rid of all the odor, we could even close everything. That was prohibitively expensive. I mean, yeah, I can build it where I guarantee you, you won't smell anything, but that is not worth the cost within it. There is enough systems where we can improve it and make it a lot better.
I will ask questions at the end of it because I misunderstood that.
Well, that's, that's why we brought it up. All right, I'll let you move on.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, we are going to address the odors that, one, I tell you, taking one M G D off of that plant is going to help your odors, period. But the other thing that you have an issue with is the existing influent lift station. As that gets rehabbed and the screening system gets done on the offgassing, that'll help tremendously for that. But thank you for pointing it out because I know that's been an issue in the past and it's something that is, is being addressed with this plan. The east satellite wastewater treatment plant is pretty much the same. You've got the screening system as required by T C E Q.
You went back.
An influent lift station, uh, as well, then the secondary treatment system, disinfection and the solids handling.
Same thing.
Noise abatement systems and an odor abatement system and a lording system. Again, to keep the impact of the wastewater treatment plant as minimal as possible within it. All of those are being addressed in the design and the construction. So thirty-four million dollars or thirty-three point eight, where are we going for the funding? The Clean Water State Revolving Fund is what is being recommended for the city to go forward with, of submitting a financial application. I believe we've already submitted the PIF to get you on the intended use plan of getting forward with that. We talked about it one time during multi-issuances and one of them, a board's policy, it used to be that you could lock in the interest rates. That is not the case anymore. What you do lock in is the subsidy, which is the hundred and sixty-five basis points. And talking, uh, with John Martin, your financial advisor that's here tonight and am looking at the entire thirty-four million, it is their recommendation that, one, the city can afford to take this all at once and they can earn interest comparable to the interest that you're paying right now. And you will avoid the risk of higher interest rates in the future within it, which was a big motivating factor to go ahead and take this all at once. And then last but not least, there's obviously a cost every time you do an issuance of debt. So this avoids multiple costs associated with multiple issuances as well. But the biggest thing, and the three items for me, is you can afford to take it all But the biggest thing, the three items for me is you can afford to take it all at once, you can earn interest on that money while it is sitting there that's comparable to the interest that you're paying within it, and it avoids the risk of the rising interest rates at that time. So the schedule that we have is to submit that Clean Water SRF application in June of two thousand and eighteen, this month. One of them, more review and approval is September, October. That's their time to review everything, go through the entire application within it, and then close hopefully in November, December of two thousand and eighteen after you get the board commitment. The design and construction of the existing wastewater treatment plant that I mentioned, there's that three years. That's, you know, to go in and do the immediate needs and step out, get the east wastewater treatment plant done, and then come back and do all the repurposing and rehab of the existing plant. The east wastewater treatment plant is approximately two years. That's going to be starting from the grain site to permitting, to getting the design and construction moving forward is what's included in that. So yes, I'm finally at the end of this presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have regarding the wastewater plan or what's included in it.
You weren't lying when you told me an hour and a half, was you? Thank you, Keith. And yeah, we'll entertain questions from the council. And like he said, we do have John Martin back there to answer some financial questions too, if you have some of those also. So council, entertain some questions. Mr. Allen?
Yes, I joke a little bit about the smell, but we're spending thirty-four million dollars. So, you know, I know you said it's a waste treatment plant, but talking with some of your people, abling doesn't smell a bit. I know that was eighty-five million dollars, so that might be the difference.
The wastewater is, you know, it's one of those where we do our best with the abatement, but for me to sit up there and say without, short of enclosing everything, to say you're never going to smell anything at any time, that everything is going to operate appropriately, that there will never be any issues, and it will never offgas enough to get outside the wastewater treatment plant. I can promise you that, but what I can promise you is we are addressing the odors with every technical met issue that we can to bring to bear with all the tools of that, short of enclosing it where it doesn't have any offgas at all. Certainly if the city wants to enclose all of it, but we already went through that analysis and we decided we didn't want to pay for that because the only way that you can say one hundred percent, I'm never going to smell anything, is put it all in the building and then run it through activated carbon and run it through another filter before you discharge the air out within it. And that is prohibitively expensive. A lot of it.
Okay, in the back room, when you presented this to us the last meeting, I asked a question, well, let's take care of the smell, and you said yes. Now, let me finish. If it's broke down, yes, we should have smell, but other than that, if it's running, we shouldn't have smell?
You shouldn't, what the, most of the procedures, you shouldn't have a smell majority of the time, but I'm not going to sit here and guarantee what, you will absolutely never have any smells from that plant because upsets are going to happen at some point within the twenty-year life of that plant. If that's what you're asking me, that I could guarantee in twenty years you'll never smell anything, I can't guarantee.
I probably won't be here in twenty years, but I have neighbors that are. And the other question is that, what did you say, Mr. Mobley?
I said, yeah, you will.
And I guess all, all I, all I can tell you is that it is, it is being addressed with every technical tool that is in our toolbox within it, short of enclosing it and controlling the offgassing within it.
It's a lot better, Rick and his staff has done a great job, or y'all, whoever's done it, has done a great job compared to what it was two years ago. But the other question is, and this is important to myself and to our neighbors, we just got two going through twenty-five thousand loads of dirt hauling our backyard. And I'm telling you, it was dirt everywhere, everywhere. When y'all redo this, how are y'all going to block the dust and the dirt and all that, or will it be any?
Yeah, I guess y'all should want to let drive site real quickly. I'll let the design engineer go.
Thank you. Key component for that, for dust control, would be irrigation throughout the site, keeping everything wetted down through that. However, one of the benefits of completing the east satellite plant improvements first before getting into a lot of the other major basins allows us to minimize a lot of the new structures that we'd have to have. One of the early alternatives we looked at early on in this planning process was if we kept everything within this facility, within this site, we were going to have to construct new structures, taller structures, deeper structures to be able to fit more flow, more capacity within that existing property. To do that, that would have been much more excavation, much more earthwork. In this case, we're talking about a much lower level of earthwork and open earth construction, more working within existing structures. So that's also going to help to minimize the dust production as well.
Okay, if y'all haul dirt or in or out, however you're going to keep it off the streets, because we had problems with that, I don't know, any cause. Chris got on it.
A thousand.
Yeah. And I mean, and I'll have to ask the attorney if I can vote on this or not. I do live right there by it. I own some property up and down through there. I don't own any behind it, but all I'm saying is that, you know, I think this is something we've got to take consideration. And I know y'all will, y'all do a great job, y'all work for the city for many, many years, twenty years, matter of fact, I know of them. But I think it's the dirt control, your dust, and on the roads and streets, I mean, you can still go there today and Mayor, can you tell you, he lives over there, there is still orange dirt on the ground and on the road. Is that right, Mayor?
Don't go that direction.
So all I'm saying is, I sure hope y'all do a better job, or is there something the city can do to help on that or to backcharge y'all on if you don't clean it up? It's something we've got to do, and I know Chris and I've had a long conversation on this. It's something in our rules we couldn't do at one point. Hopefully we can get that changed in the future. But, because it's not fair, I don't care if it's my neighborhood or your neighborhood or Mr. Kravens' neighborhood, it's not fair.
Yes, sir. There are two, two components, two main approaches for that is, one is material that can come up out of the truck, and one requirement there is that before the truck leaves the site, that it has to have a pullover tarp or cover that helps to minimize wind blowing, pulling debris out of the top of the truck. The other component of that is what you attract through the tires. And so for a large enough construction site, if I remember correctly, when you start to excavate over a site greater than one acre, it's either one acre or five acres, there's additional stormwater pollution prevention requirements. And one component of that is usually kind of creating almost like what looks like a cattle guard on the ground. But what that does, it creates a vibration effect on the tires, so you're actually creating a mud trap and earth trap on the tires before they actually leave the site. And another component of that as well is part of the stormwater pollution prevention plan is that there is a person with the contracting team that is required to ensure that if they have that component there to minimize or eliminate debris being carried off-site and then dropped off on the streets, is that they also have to inspect those vehicles and make sure if they're, if they go through that cattle guard and they still have debris, that they actually have to be washed down and that, that material has to be captured again before they go off-site.
Great, thank you. Pete, I was easier on him, I was you.
Council, any more discussion with or questions for Mr. Kendall on this, this project?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mobley?
So looking at the financials, it looks as though, and I don't know if this is for you, Keith, or?
Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin. To talk about, it looked like you've got gross revenues staying stable for the next thirty years and expenses staying consistent over the next thirty years, and yet, and that's without another connection to the system, is my understanding. And yet it's still cash flows even if we take on this debt. Is that, is that what I'm seeing here?
That's our expectation based upon what we've done, has taken your most recent audited fiscal year, and we use that in terms of the net revenue available to be able to service the debt. So it does not include any future growth, it does not include any future rate increases that are needed or anything like that. So we do believe that it will cash flow. Now, we're assuming that, you know, these interest rates will stay somewhat in check and in the pro forma that we've done, we've assumed rates would be a half percent higher.
Half percent higher than right now?
Correct.
Okay, and?
And that would be probably in, you know, by the time you actually place the debt, place the certificates with the water development board, that would be probably in first part of November or so.
So if you had to do the math, what, if they rose, let's say we, let's say we put this off, we put it off to the last minute to where TCEQ, TCEQ said, you absolutely have to start right now. And let's say, how, how long would you say it would be before they would lower the boom on us for that, Keith?
Gosh, I think you're probably within five, five years of that. But the issue with that is, okay, back that up. If it's going to take me two years to do a wastewater treatment plant, that means they lower the boom on you, and you're going to go at least another two, if not three years before you can satisfy them.
So, so we're talking five years. So back to the financial side of it, it, the Fed rate has gone up basically since it's less than, it was less than point eight percent April last year, and that's one point eight or something like that. It's, it's almost, it's at least doubled in one year. And so if, if it just goes up a half a percent, we're talking an in, just a payment over a thirty-year period, we're talking about a difference of eight thousand dollars a month on this debt. And that's, with the life of it, it's about three million dollars. So it's kind of critical that we do this, and I say this mainly for folks out there that are going to, that are going to criticize us for spending this money. Thirty-four million dollars, we have a forty million dollar budget. So this is a full, a full year's budget for this one item.
It's a lot of money.
I'm sorry?
It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. But if we, if we just duct tape this thing, we're going to be talking about this same thing in five to seven years, just, and we're going to probably spend more money, and I can assure you that interest rates will be higher than they are today. Or am I wrong there?
I think you've.
Because that's, that's kind of the trend we're going on.
I'm right there on the, I bet, I bet there, right there with you.
It's good to have friends. Thank you.
Council, any more questions, concerns, or issues on this item? Keith, Keith, I wish you wouldn't use the word "end of useful life." I don't sleep at night knowing, knowing that that, that plant could just fail us any given time, you know, and what are we going to do, you know?
Makes a lot of us nervous.
It makes me nervous, yes.
Would you prefer living on borrowed time?
Car. City manager, Chris Kaufman's got something he wants to add, I believe.
Mayor, council. Keith, thank you for your presentation. I, I would just like to say that, you know, part of my job description, or a large part of my job description, is to keep you apprised of things like this and, and to be prepared and to be ready for the next generation. And as we all know, it's not about us and it's not about now, it's about the community and it's about tomorrow. And this is a big step, you know, two weeks ago, we took a big step towards phase two of the water treatment plant. And this spreadsheet that's in here shows, that's in your packet, shows that without any additional water meters or sewer taps tied onto the system, this thing will be able to pay our bills and, and we'll be able to provide for the future for our infrastructure. So I'm just trying to close this statement, this agenda item tonight for y'all with assurances that your staff has been very busy looking at the needs of the city, and these are, these are strong recommendations that are, quite frankly, we don't have an option. We could, like you say, put some duct tape on it and hop on down the road and end up like we are with the water treatment plant, where we build a water treatment plant and within a year we're doing phase two. So this is really a comprehensive approach to get us where we need to be. Water, sewer, and our electricity, you know, we're addressing that without issuing bonds. So we're doing some capital improvements with that as we go along too. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and Rick is here as well, but city staff is excited about the potential of being able to, to meet the growth needs. As, as was stated, I want to reiterate this, if we don't issue, if we don't approve another plat, all the ones that are approved and have been currently submitted exceed the water capacity at the sewer plant. And so, and they also exceed the water capacity at the water treatment plant. So our growth is going to pay for this, this debt, and that's what you ideally want. We are a small town of nine thousand people, but we're growing and the people that are coming are paying these bills. So the people that are here are helping to pay the existing bills, but as we grow, these new bills are coming out as well. So, thank you.
And we have to remember that this is for out there for twenty years. This is not a debt we're accruing right now for what we need, I mean, we need it now, but this is going to cover twenty years down the road. I mean, you could put some math to that, it's one point two, one point three million a year, whatever it is, but I mean, like Mr. Mobley said, right now's the interest rate we want to, we want to use, and that's when we should be, you know, spending that type of money, so. And yes, we need it. It's, we, we need it, and we need it yesterday, so. Council, any more discussion on this item? If there's no more discussion, then I will entertain a motion to, to approve the engineering agreement with Hibbs and Todd and authorizing, and here again, we're going to authorize the city manager to be authorized to represent, be the representative for the city, and that's going to keep things from bottlenecking and have him where he can sign off on things on a readily basis. So I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion.
And we've got the motion made by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilman Corgan. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Keith, for that presentation. I'm forward to working with you. Our next item is to consider the use of Intimate Domain to condemn property, and I'm going to let, I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman, our city manager, to give us a staff representative here.
You know, we, we've been working on the airport project for quite some time. We're making progress. Brazos is currently in the process of moving the transmission lines at the substation. We've been working feverishly behind the scenes, staff has, to acquire the necessary easements to relocate the United Co-op electric right-of-ways and also the Granberry electric right-of-ways in relation to that airport project. It's come to our attention that we need to do a friendly condemnation, and I'll turn it over to Michael to kind of fill us in on the information related to that, so. Mr. Ross?
Thank you. Mayor, council, Chris. As Chris said, you may recall that part of this airport project is, is numerous relocations of power lines in order for the runway project to proceed. And we have been making great strides, staff has, over quite some time, for over three hundred acres total acquisition and easements dedicated for these power line relocations to multiple electrical utility companies. We, we're down really to two easements, and one is a thirty-foot wide easement that we will need to dedicate to United Cooperative Services. The other is a twenty-foot wide easement that we need to dedicate to Granberry Electric. This, as you know, we, we have toes doing our legal work for the airport, and after an exhaustive search, the legal team there has determined that there could be as many as twenty-five owners of the land where these easements rest, these potential easements. They've attempted to locate the landowners over quite some time, but they have been unsuccessful in finding most of them. The primary reason is there was municipal utility district that was created when the Knox Ranch was in its infancy and there were other entities established, and the mud was set up at that time, and they create these board positions and they give them small strips of land, and those have changed over time, the business owner entities have changed over time, and that's what's led to so many different fractured owners us trying to find. As Chris said, the recommended approach in this case is to proceed with a friendly condemnation and in an eminent domain process. You'll notice in the attached resolution to this that there is a detailed process that's outlined that our legal team will go through to make sure they go through every step in an attempt to find every owner, and when they can't, they need to go through all those additional steps so that due process is followed. We, the appraisal was completed and the offer amount, based on the appraiser, was thirteen thousand and sixty-seven dollars for these easements. Should condemnation, should a condemnation hearing be necessary, it's possible that amount may change. Funds would come from the Tech Dot Aviation Land reimbursements for this. And if council would like to proceed with this motion to adopt the resolution, please be aware you need to say the specific language, read the specific language in that first paragraph on the staff memorandum, and, which starts with "I move that," and it's very, very important to say that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael. Council, any questions or concerns? Counsel, any questions or concerns for Michael, or Chris?
I've got a couple.
Mr. Allen.
Michael, two questions. One of them is, how long do you think it'll take to do this?
The attorneys, going through the due process, will probably take 30 to 60 days, depending on if they get answers from the people that they attempt to contact, but it's almost already assured that they're going to have to give notice, wait a finite amount of time, which is, I believe it's a 30-day period, and then they can take the legal action necessary to move forward, having not been able to make that required contact. But it's still 60 days or so. If we have a condemnation hearing, we go, which it appears we will, that's going to add some more time to it. Overall, this could end up being, before it's all said and done, because there's so many moving parts, it could be six months from now before we get that final two easements, but we're continuing to move forward with the electrical companies in every way needed. Right now, we're getting ready for bidding and everything to go forward, this would just be fitting that last little piece of the puzzle, kind of in the middle of what's already there. It's not holding us up on proceeding with our, we're not to the point where it's holding us up at all on the project, construction-wise, it's just something we need to have in place when it comes time to actually do those relocation of the lines.
Okay. Is this in the middle of the property?
Yes.
How come it didn't go one side or the other?
This was where the lines, they, well, I don't know the specific answer to that, but in general, the electrical engineer that's working for us, they, the electrical companies want straight lines whenever possible, these, some of these are transmission towers, some, these are distribution lines, in this case. They looked at other options, I know other options were discussed, and this was the best path. It's going to get done, there's no opposition to this, the developer themselves are for this as well, the underlying developer for this project, it's just, they can't find the people, so they need to go through this legal process of waiting the time, filing the paperwork to get this done.
Looks like to me that it's killed both sides of the property, when it did it through the middle.
Right.
It's a one-acre tract of land, that it was peeled out of that Knox Ranch project, for five particular owners, to be able to have the election to create the mud. Since that time, those five owners have, and we don't know where they're at, and their descendants, and we're tracking them down. The attorneys have probably spent about four months on, you know, getting those things in order to be able to present this tonight, so.
No, I don't have a problem, I'm just looking at it and saying...
Well, that goes into the value of the land, and there's already a 70-foot easement on there we're going to vacate, so, we are helping them.
We're paying 70 foot.
Yeah, yeah, they're gaining, they're getting rid of a Brazos transmission line, and gaining a Granberry UCS distribution line, which are much smaller.
I guess I'm a little bit confused, but we've been talking airport for many years, but our, I thought in our last meeting, six months ago, nine months ago, we were talking about the only easement we liked on, or liked getting, was on that piece of property we bought.
No, it was on Knox Ranch, and they didn't realize, they didn't have the authority to grant that easement.
Okay, but we got the other easement on that property we bought.
This is the last piece that we need.
Okay, I thought Michael said he had two.
There's two easements on this one acre.
On one acre, okay.
Yeah, one 30-foot and one 20-foot, right next to each other.
And the location of it is agreeable to the Knox Ranch folks.
There's the 30, that's the 30-foot, I'm sorry, Chris, that's the 30-foot for United Cooperative, and that's the 20, if I can see him from here, or the, that goes to the city.
And they wouldn't be able to build on a lot of that anyway, because of the setback, Anyway, I'm happy to get to this point where I can honestly say that that's the last needle in the haystack, and we hadn't worked out until the title company revealed the multiple owners, and...
13.
Because there was a separate corporation created, and there was all kinds of creative business activities going on to put together that mud, and without obligating the rest of the property, so, anyway.
Counsel, any more discussion? With that said, and like Michael said, there is a particular, we don't do this a lot, so that there is a particular wording that needs to be in that, if Counsel chooses to make this motion, and we'll need to read that into the paragraph that we have set there in front of you, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Do we have a motion?
I would like to move that the City of Granberry authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the electric utility easements described in Resolution 18-11, as presented on property located south of US 377, and west of Holmes Drive, in Hood County, Texas, for public use, in connection with the construction and maintenance of electrical distribution lines, and other related electrical facilities necessary for the expansion of the City of Granberry Regional Airport, and I further move to adopt Resolution Number 18-11 as presented. The first vote, the first record vote on this motion will apply to all units of property to be condemned.
So we have that motion?
Second.
By Councilman Mobley?
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, are there any more discussion on this motion? Take a record vote? Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilman Reiner, how do you vote?
Aye.
That is approved? Thank you. Our next item is to consider adopting ordinance Number 1841, amending Article 6.03 of the Code of Ordinances related to the mobile food establishments. I'm going to, I'm going to call upon our city attorney, just to give us a brief synopsis of what's been done to that article there, that ordinance, and kind of brief us on what it does to it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Back in February of this year, the council passed an ordinance adopting the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 25, Sections 228 and 229, specific to this particular issue. Those actually went into effect June 1st. We've had a lot of requests for mobile food vending units, however, we have what's been determined to be a prohibition against them, and through our zoning ordinances. What we've done is we've amended 6.03, which is the adoption of the Administrative Code, to include designating mobile food units to particular zoning areas, in this particular instance, this particular amendment will designate them in the same zoning matrix as restaurants that are categorized as drive-ins, and that would include heavy commercial, light commercial, and industrial. And so those will be the zoning areas where these mobile food vendors will be able to operate. The only piece of the puzzle left to get this done is a, an amendment to 11.9 in the zoning ordinances, which Scott and I have been talking about and working on, that merely would just amend that ordinance to exclude the ban on mobile food units pursuant to them being properly permitted through 6.03 of our Code of Ordinances. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Chris, does staff have anything to report out on this?
You bet. I'd like to just say that because of the action we took in February, you know, we adopted the state laws regarding food, mobile food establishments, and anybody that wants to do that just needs to come to the permit office at some point, and find them a site that meets the state code, and we're ready to roll, so.
So this makes it a little more user-friendly then, I guess, or somewhat?
Well, it just clears the air. It clears the air. We were a little unclear in our, in 6.03, the way it was written, so, clears it up. But in February, when we adopted the ordinances, and updated all the codes, they went into effect June 1st, and so, you know, we, without really concentrating on that particular thing, we were taking care of business holistically for the city, so. Anyway, this is a little specific thing, the P and Z will come back and fine-tune those areas if they want, so, but right now, it'll be available in those restaurant areas. I think the real confusion is, is people think that maybe these mobile food establishments should be able to set up on public property, like City Beach, or in the parking lot at the conference center, or park, or set up on the street side of Walker, and that's not the case at all. Our ordinance strictly prohibit solicitation on public property, so, that's not being addressed. But what is being addressed is somebody can be on a parking lot, and have all the codes met by the state, and be inspected by us, and have that type of unit, so.
Is that for snow cone stands also?
No, we have a different ordinance for snow cones, they're called seasonal permits, and they're good for 90 days.
Okay, but, it's been asking me about, a couple citizens, do they have hot water and cold water and all that in the snow cone stands?
I do not know the answer to that. I would have to ask the...
Any staff here?
Jeanne was here, but she's not here. You can ask that some other time, come on by.
I've asked that before.
Yeah? I don't know, you hadn't asked me.
Yeah, I have.
I don't recall.
Okay, that's no problem, my memory's short sometimes. The other thing, Chris, that, let's say they want to set up on the Courthouse Square, we'd have nothing to do with that, right?
That's on the Courthouse Square, and they're allowing that by event, and we do inspect and make sure that those food vendors are meeting the codes for that temporary use.
They're going to have city hot water and cold water and all that?
I do not know the answer to all that.
For that either?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. If, say they went before the Commissioners Court, and they said, "We approve the hot dog stand," just to say if they did, they still got to go by the city rules, right?
Right, right. They still got to meet the Texas Administrative Code relating to mobile food establishments. We have no restrictions beyond what the state requires.
Can you get back with me?
The water.
Yes, thank you, sir. And I was just really guilty, I had to say that.
Counsel, any more discussion on this ordinance? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said, or to adopt ordinance Number 1841, amending Article 6.03 of the Code of Ordinances related to the mobile food establishment.
Some will.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan, and a second by Councilperson Reiner down there. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item Number 13 is approved. At this time, I'll now declare that the Granberry City Council has convened an open session, and all the members are present, the City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provision of the Texas Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, Section 551-071, consultation with the attorney pending on complicated litigations, and Section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property, the Council will now go in. There was no action taken in the executive session. Counselors, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute an assignment of the development credit owned by Tri-County LLC to the entity of their choice.
We have a motion by Councilman Mobley, do we have a second on that?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Corrigan? Counsel, was that right? I'm sorry. Counsel, any more discussion on that item?
I thought it was two, two companies involved in that.
You named two, didn't you?
No, we decided to let him assign it where he wants, so we don't get wrong.
It's him, it's the city manager and the company.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this case, it goes to them in premier, or whoever it is.
Of their choice.
Of their choice.
Of their choice.
Okay.
It's his money, we owe him, so.
Any more discussion on that motion, Counsel? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, we'll let the city manager do his thing there. Thank you. Counsel, is there any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.